Let's start with the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to call meeting to order. And could I get a roll call?
Sure. Ms. McGanley? Here, welcome and happy birthday.
Oh, yes.
You got that on there.
Yeah.
And we're fortunate you said 40th birthday.
Yes, right.
Happy birthday.
No, thank you.
Mr. Sora is absent. Mr. World?
Present.
Mr. Riggs is absent, and Mr. Martis?
Here.
Welcome. It's good to see you too.
Yes, you too.
Did we have someone call in?
Oh, good.
Hello, Mellie. Nathan?
Is...
Is he gonna call in or...
He wasn't sure if he'd be able to. I don't know if he's on vacation or what.
Okay.
But Steve wasn't going to.
Okay. So everybody had a chance to read the minutes, claims, and financials?
I didn't send you copies of the claims since you guys were gonna be here, so you have your copies there. And then on the minutes, there's the meeting that we had in May, and then we had that special meeting on Saturday. So you sign the front, but not sign the back.
Yeah, okay, no.
Yeah. I'm just gonna start these all right here.
Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I like a motion.
Second.
All right.
So we have a roll call vote. Ms. McGanley? Here. Now, when we're doing a roll call vote on minutes, we have to do...
To approve the minutes?
Ah, all right.
We still have to do that roll call.
Yeah. And Mr. World?
Yes.
And Mr. Martis?
Yes.
All right. The claims.
I'll make a motion to accept the claims.
Second.
So we're gonna do this again. Roll call vote. Ms. McGanley?
Yes.
Mr. World?
Yes.
Mr. World?
I would do them all three, but I think we have to do them one at a time.
So I think that would be the prudent way.
Yeah.
Thank you. And now could I get a motion to accept the financials?
I'll make a motion to accept the financials.
Second.
All right. Ms. McGanley, we're gonna roll call vote again?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
All right. Public hearing. Do we need to close this meeting or just go straight to...
No, you just go to public hearing.
Okay. We have Megan Johnson here representing Duke Energy to talk about the vacant alley.
And I think they had asked me to present that, which I had previously submitted to council with their petition to vacate the alley as noted in their petition. This is just a petition to vacate a 15-foot wide alley that has been platted but never paved, never used. It runs approximately 120 feet from what, again, was platted Church Street but not paved or used, going out towards the river. And it connects what would have been Church Street with another alley, or also known as Southeast Second Street, that has one house on it. And the purpose of this is that Duke Energy owns the property on both sides, has an existing substation there, and this would make access to them much easier and be able to combine the two properties there. And because the town has never used it, is not likely to use it, I've driven out there, and because of its configuration, I mean, the town, I think, would have to put a bridge in. And I just don't envision it ever being utilized for its original platted alley purposes. This would get it back on the tax rolls, so at least legal has no objection to it. I think it was sent to police, fire, and street. I've not heard anybody else have objections or comments on it. But that's what this vacation petition's all about. And of course, upon vacation, title vests in the property owners to each side, which in this case would both be Duke Energy.
Cherry, do you have any comments?
No.
Represent... Did you hear of any comments?
I have not heard of any, no.
Okay. All right.
And it was properly published in the paper 10 days ago.
All right. Megan, do you have anything you want to add?
No, we just have plans to expand the station a little bit and, you know, make it more reliable for future use. So within the next couple of years is the plan right now. So this would make it a little bit easier to do that.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
One other ordinance is this.
One. Oh, this will be ordinance two.
Two dash 2020.
All right.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance two dash 2020.
I'll second.
Okay. So roll call vote. Ms. McGanley?
Yes.
Mr. World?
Yes.
Favorite. Mr. Martis?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay, or you might...
I would have one that you guys could sign for being present here. So it's gonna be three of your votes. And this is to be recorded. I told her I'd take care of recording it, but we can maybe give them a copy of it before she leaves. And you did sign the column that said vacant alley, yeah?
Yes.
Did we have someone just join?
I did, just the president applying.
Brenda?
Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming to town and for the help we're doing.
Sure. Thank you.
I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Daddy.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay. Going into...
Oh, I'm gonna go make a copy.
Okay. I think we can move on. Guests. Brenda?
Yes.
We have Brenda on here.
For, yeah, they're on down under new business.
Okay. But I'll put you on hold, Brenda. Never mind. All right. Moving to unfinished business. We have talked for probably three different times on the police working other jobs for outside employment. I think everybody has seen an email passed along from Richard talking about a couple, two opportunities, just a summer locally.
Correct.
Or within Wayne County, giving the officers opportunities to make extra money. We have, we've lost another officer, and one of the main reasons is money, salary. We're not always gonna be able to fight that, but here's something I would like to look into because, we're already, I don't really see that much out of our pocket for a financial benefit for the officers. Richard, you wanna talk a little bit more?
I mean, basically, you got the email, it's, we have had discussions. Actually, this goes back even maybe two or three years ago. It's been a while. Never really had a per se vote on it to say whether we, you know, permit it or not. But there's all kinds of opportunities that come up for outside employment, whether it be doing security or traffic, you know, control or whatever. I mean, as you know, I think one of the big ones we had a couple of years back was the Richmond construction that was going on. We were asked to be part of that, and of course, we didn't. The officer that left also told me that that was another reason why he was in his consideration, why he left. We're the only agency in Wayne County that's not allowed to do that type of work, so, you know, it is what it is. But I think if definitely, whether they take advantage of all the opportunities that are out there or not, it's at least having the option to do it if they choose to.
Right.
With some discretion, obviously, but...
Bob, would you like to give...
Well, right now, your town code at 36.05, it talks about outside employment and use of town property. Right now says that no one employee can work outside of the town without prior approval of the direct supervisor, which could be council in the instance of the chief and the deputies. And then it goes on to say no employees shall use any town property for outside employment or personal use. So I think you've got two questions here. Now, in the personnel policy draft as amended, it does say, provided the prohibition shall not include the use of uniforms by police officers in those situations where they are allowed to work outside with the duties following prior approval of the town. That has not been yet amended, but that is in the working stages of the draft. But right now, I think you could probably waive that. But there are two different questions. One, allowing the officers to work. And then two, what, if any of their town tools, being uniforms and/or vehicles, would you allow them to use?
Bob, what was that one ordinance again? The one about personal use, was that in there?
Yes, I mean, it says, "No employee shall use any town property for outside employment or personal use."
Which we do personal use now, do we not? With the police cars going home?
They take them home, but...
Says not for outside employment, but...
Yeah, but personal use, yeah.
Yeah, I think that...
But you don't drive them around or nothing?
No, no.
No, no.
It's going home. I'm just clarifying that, 'cause I know we're going to have...
We also have SOPs that cover some of this as well, so...
We also even say town vehicles shall only be allowed to the business of the town, although the use may include going to lunch while on duty, so we did have that exception too. So, but if you want them to... I'm saying you could allow them to work but not use their uniforms. You could allow them to work but not use their vehicles, or you could allow the whole thing. But I just want to distinguish two different things.
Richard, what do other departments do?
They use everything.
Use everything.
Uniforms.
Most cases, you cannot, you have to have a car or a uniform.
Right.
Just as an example, the... I'm not careful how I word this, but the big drug bust that was on the interstate here a couple of weeks ago, that was by somebody working outside employment is what, that's how that happened. Not to say that's gonna happen every time, I'm not saying that, but, you know, that's...
But what did it matter that it was an outside? Did it matter that, you know, somebody...
No one would have been up there working traffic detail had it not been for the outside employment. I guess the bottom line, yeah.
I see.
And in order to do that, they want traffic enforcement, so if they were to do traffic enforcement, I need my, all my tools.
Sure.
And Dan, maybe this was another part of your question to me too, as far as, what always comes up questionable is the legal exposure on the town when they are doing something else. And so that's why I would always prefer that if they do do this, that there's some sort of indemnification that whoever it is that they're hiring would hold the town harmless to the extent somebody tries to drag the town in if somebody did something wrong as far as physical abuse or anything else that's in the news these days. So I would just want to protect the town in that method too, so that even though they are doing work with their cruiser in their uniform, they are not doing town's business.
Bob, would you, so you could draw that up for us?
Oh, sure, if people do not have any...
I think most of the plans, I'm not sure about the two that I sent you for sure, I didn't check on that, but most of them already have those in place. So I know when the sheriff's department started allowing their guys to do that, that was a big issue too, so...
I'd add a minimum, I'd want you to condition any approval on superior extension.
Yeah, whether it be through Bob or if they already have one, Bob would submit to Bob for his approval.
You'd have it in hand before, I mean, I don't know.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I really think, then there's, we're really looking at three issues. Number one, do we allow the employee? And I'm going to say that if we allow the employee, then their uniform has, bare minimum, their uniform has to go with it. Number two, then do we talk about other equipment, the cars? And then number three, it would have to be based on you having documents showing that we're not liable for anything when the employee is working for someone else, another entity. Correct, everybody?
Yes.
The three things?
Yes.
I think, I mean, guys, even, I mean, if it's, even to pay for their own fuel doing this, that's not an issue, I don't think. If that's something the council would make, you know, help a little bit maybe. Not that there's gonna be a lot of fuel cost in it, but it depends on what you're doing, but...
But you would bring it to council first before they do something, or they just...
If that's what council desires, or, you know, I...
I think we want to move on it now.
Yeah, we've got two opportunities right now that I can't wait too long on, or it's gonna be...
It's gonna fly.
We'll go to the end there with, basically, every time they want to do something, I think you gotta leave it to Richard. Like, in my personal opinion, I don't think...
As long as they have that written.
As long as they have it, and that's why I'm saying, as long as he has it in hand.
Right.
The insurance or the liability or...
If we gave you that authorization to approve, I definitely would like to hear it at the next council meeting, just what the officers have been doing.
Sure.
Counsel, does that seem...
That mileage, they may not be a bad idea. Let's say they were to transport, I don't know, I'm making this up, a transport of prisoner from some other agency, and they had to take him to St. Louis and back. Why should you pay for that mileage?
Correct. And one of their opportunities...
Well, generally, generally, like, if you, just for example, worked Colts game. We would, if you were involved in some type of incident or arrest, IMPD takes over and it's theirs. We're just, the other agencies that are there are basically assisting agencies or backup or whatever, but they would not be making arrests there. IMPD would take over then. Like, they go out to guys from reservoir and work. I think it's Fisher's PD that, if there's an incident of some sort and arrest needs to be made, Fisher's PD then takes over.
I think what Bob was saying on this one, though, is if one of the officers does go to Fisher's, that they, there's a form that they document the mileage.
Yeah, that's, Fisher's PD doesn't have examples, 'cause that's not necessarily one they have to wear their uniform or anything. That's just outside employment itself.
Well, anytime, even if they're going to Richmond, then I'm okay with they're using the equipment, but they're paying for the mileage on the vehicle.
Yeah, and you could set a per mile charge, just like in reverse, of when you pay an employee that goes on a...
So how would we, how would I, I mean, I don't want to take it out of their check, but...
I, I can, I don't know how you would work that out, but...
Because if they have...
I mean, if they pay for their own fuel, they could just do that when they go, but instead of using, you know, a town credit card to pay for fuel, they just use their own. But it's whatever you guys think.
That's not a very good system.
If you have a monitoring system, I mean, I don't want to...
I don't want to put this into something...
They all would be falling for me, Richard.
To make sure that it goes the way it's supposed to, but...
I'd almost just say, you know, I mean, it's gotta be some kind of an honor system or, you know...
Thank you, I would rather lean towards the honor system and you enforcing the honor system with your officers.
We don't want to make it too difficult, you know, just tell them to do it and hope they do, you know?
You say something like, if it's under 50 miles, it don't even work. But more than 50 miles, they have to report the difference in mileage and either pay their own or reimburse you if they used a credit card.
Because what, a bunch of, I mean, 75% probably, what, within 30 miles?
Oh, most of it's probably within the county, so, I mean, yeah.
See, I don't really have a problem with the gas, it's that, you go Indianapolis, San Marcos, whatever. That's a little different story.
Yeah.
Outside of the county.
You're in the Colts games, if they go out there, if you drive their police vehicle out there, and then generally, you park it, and they, they're on foot, whether it's working a gate or whatever the case may be, most likely probably working in a parking lot or something. But, so there's not a lot of mileage other than just to and from, but it's not like they're out patrolling Indianapolis. That's not gonna happen, so I wouldn't want that to happen.
Say, anything outside of county, they would pay mileage.
So, yeah.
If they're in the county, that's not fair, just go on.
Pay it directly or reimburse you, or how?
Uh, they pay it directly. That way, we're not creating any, I don't want it to cost more than the $5 worth of gas.
That'd just be a big headache, otherwise starting to figure it all out.
So...
Yeah, and, you know, it, to me, you know, you gotta show them some way that you trust what they're doing, you know, and...
And we do.
And I think in the big picture, we've been through this three or four years, and you see enough turnover. It's time to take, it was gonna help the police hang on to our employees, retain our employees, absolutely.
And if everybody else is down, I mean, let's just do it.
Okay, then in summarization, if we were to do this, you would, Richard, would have the authority to authorize the job, the person to go on the job, but it would be your responsibility before it happens to get the information, holding the town, not holding the town liable.
A whole harmless, they would need a whole harmless agreement from the responsible party.
That's why I'm gonna keep him. Thank you. We would, we would then be saying that they could use the town's equipment, mainly the clothing, the car, and...
And gun.
And gun, and gun, okay. And they would be allowed to work outside jobs.
With his prior approval, with Richard's prior approval.
Any normal equipment that would be used on the force here, I know, would be got.
That's the better way to put it.
Any equipment that they would use.
Or use in the daily job, yeah.
And they'd be responsible for paying for their own gas, if it is requiring travel outside of county. Those are the things.
That's it.
So there'd be, if that's the case, would be an order now for a motion to be made, saying all of those things.
All right. You're, that works for you?
Yes.
Counsel members, does that work for you? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion, summarize, and basically what you summarized.
The four points that I summarized.
Allowing, at Richard's approval, allow any of his staff to work outside employment with the use of their uniform, car, and any equipment they normally use here, provided that they first have a whole harmless agreement from the responsible party and with the understanding that they must pay for their own mileage if it's travel outside of county.
Jeff made a motion.
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Can they not hear?
Yeah, they can record it.
Oh.
Maybe cameras off too, isn't it?
Yeah. He's got it?
Okay. Can we get on roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. World?
Yes.
Mr. Martis?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next. I'd like to discuss, it's been a few months, having prayers at the beginning of the council meeting. First, I'd like to talk to Bob. Well, he's back up to speed.
Well, as I had presented a memo to you all before, I cannot completely guarantee that it would pass constitutional mustard. I believe it would. The most recent Supreme, United States Supreme Court case has allowed that for a town council meeting, but everything has different factual situations to it. In that one, it had been done for many, many, many years. They allowed different faiths to come in and give the prayer, and they said, they even quoted the fact that the very first United States Congress chaplain opened a meeting with prayer. And so based on that, if a town has a history of doing that, they were not gonna upset that. Now, it was a five-floor decision by that Supreme Court. And since then, different lower courts have ruled in different manners. And so that's why I, someone who said, trying to predict an outcome on a constitutional question like that is like mixing a bowl of chili. You just don't know what the result's going to be. So it could be challenged, but the last Supreme Court case allowed a town council to do it under those circumstances. So if you chose to do that, I would, of course, defend you, and if they brought something, but I can't say that it would win, or nor can I say that nobody would challenge it, which could be at a cost, like some counties have incurred in Indiana. So that's the best I can give you from my research.
Okay. Hearing that, and we talked about that. We reached out to the local ministry association and, I think, Western Wayne Ministry.
Minister.
And rather than anyone here doing it, if you, a member of that association would come in and conduct a prayer. So anyone that was part of that association could come in and give the prayer.
Steve requested, since he wasn't over here to table this.
Okay. Any comments?
Honestly, I'm all for prayer, but it worries me that, you know, we might be held liable and, like, cost the town money.
Well, I think, and that's the point, point I was gonna make, Debbie, I'm all for it, but at what point, if someone were to disagree or want to come in and debate that with us, how far do we let Bob go in defending that, our decision? And that's the only part that would scare me.
Me too.
But that could be, uh, come after the fact, though. I mean, maybe no one would ever come in and say...
Yeah, it's just a chance that, you know, if we're willing to take that chance, I don't know. You know, if we've been doing it for years, probably wouldn't be an issue. But because we haven't been doing it, and then all of a sudden, we start doing it, I don't know if that would be an issue with some people. I don't know.
Well, I would like to table it, I'd like all five members to be here. But I'd like everybody to think about it, and I would like to have a vote next time. And anyone, please comment over the next few days, any additional thoughts?
I'm with you, Dan. We have talked about this for a while. We, and Bob has given us some memo.
Yeah.
And I'm just, I think, table it maybe for one or month, and then we can leave it down.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay, tabling that, I say we move on to new business. Let's see, Resolution 1-2020, to forgive penalties on customers' utility bills.
Yes, when we closed March 13, we had already, on the 15th, penalties all automatically rolled on. Well, then, we were closed April, May, and now June. We did not put penalties on. I was saying earlier, I have 14 people that are due to be shut off because they haven't paid anything since the middle of March, when we shut the doors. So now, we're gonna have March, April, May, June, and then they get their July bill, and then we're gonna shut them off because, you know, they haven't paid anything. So if we don't charge the penalties for April, May, and June, I mean, that saves them a little bit, but that's just gonna be for water and trash, since we just billed for sewer, unless you bring that up at your sewer meeting. So Bob wrote an order, a resolution for us, too.
I will take this to the wastewater board next week in hopes that we vote to forgive the penalties as well. This is an issue with utilities and communities all across the country. But the majority of them, you cannot disconnect until June 30th, or no, July 1st, based on the governor's back on track initiative. But I think that with all the issues we've had throughout the last few months, that we should erase any additional fees.
Yeah, for the public's purpose, the governor's order did prohibit disconnection, but they left it to the local communities about the penalties.
At this point, I think it's the right thing to do. It's not like we're flush with cash or anything, but still, we can weather that. So, any questions or comments?
I think it's fair that I can do.
Okay. Could I get a motion to approve Resolution 1-2020?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution dash, or 1-2020.
Second.
Ms. McGanley?
Yes.
Mr. World?
Yes.
Ms. Mars?
Yes.
All right. Next, and I think we have, is still there on the phone? Is anyone on the phone?
I can, this is Blitzer, and I see this, and I'm here.
Okay.
And I know Jim King, I think Jim King is getting ready to call in.
Okay, we have.
That's not them still.
Okay, all right.
They're down at E.
E, I'm sorry. Okay, we have a request to close one block north and south Foot Street for the antique fair.
They do this every year, they just need barricades, and they just wanna make sure that, that they can get it closed for their fair this weekend.
I'll make a motion, we.
What was the date on that?
This Saturday. This Saturday.
All it is, I request a new fire lane so we have to get food, and so they get on the way.
On foot.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think they do, do they?
Yeah.
They do?
They keep stuff they can get out of the way for us.
Okay.
Okay.
Just in case we have to get into that. There's house, there's house.
They're making stuff there, but it can be moved.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
Make sure they get stuff they can move out, put a, big tents up, mark it in the road or anything.
Okay.
All right.
So I'll make a motion, we, um, close Foot Street for the antique fair, regard, make sure they leave a fire lane, I guess.
Okay, say.
Okay. Um, Ms. McGeeley?
Yes.
Mr. Merle?
Yes.
Mr. Mars?
Yes.
Okay, so they are gonna close Foot Street, north and south, one block, it's only one block, okay? Okay, good.
She's about a half a block, wouldn't she?
Yeah. Close on.
Easy by the alley.
South to the alley, yeah, okay.
We have people doing a block operation.
Okay, all right, we have a request to use the shelter house number two from Marty Troxel.
Right, he, um, said because of the amount that the restaurants can hold, that the combination of the jar show and the antique shows this year's together, so he wanted to have a shelter house and, um, just to have chicken from Coach Halls or wherever, just so that he could get all the people that come to that show, and he could feed them Friday night. And even though he knew that the park was open, but the playground was closed, it's pretty much gonna be adults, so he was okay with that.
And that's June?
This Friday.
June twelfth?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't put a date on that, June twelfth, from four to nine, and he would clean up the mess at the shelter house back here.
I make a motion, we allow Marty Troxel to use, um, shelter two, um, June twelfth from four to six, or four to nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say.
Ms. McGeeley?
Yes.
Mr. Merle?
Yes.
Mr. Mars?
Yes.
All right, I will call him and let him know.
Next, we have a request for Travis Gaver to use the fire station for a birthday party on six twenty.
He, he didn't really have a whole lot, he, he thought the time, but then he called me today and he said, he may have to change the time, so I just let that time off. Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm.
You're your granddaughter. Your granddaughter, yeah.
I make a motion, we let Travis use the fire station for his daughter's birthday party, the twentieth.
Say.
Okay, Ms. McGeeley?
Yes.
Mr. Merle?
Yes.
Mr. Mars?
Yes.
Awesome. Now, this is, now, this is.
All right, uh, Jim King, did you just call in?
Yeah, I just called.
Perfect timing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect timing, okay. Uh, we have a request from King and McLean's to close the alley, July ninth, between their buildings of the loft on Main Street and McFowler's building for an open house to the public. Um, comments? Jim, Brenda?
That was probably mine, yeah, that was probably mine, I, I, 'cause I talked to Sherry about it today, um, you're probably all aware that we renovated the building at three twenty-one west main to the post office, and as a result, we, uh, one, relocated business during the toast, but we also have two new businesses that are both in there, which in pandemic times, we're pretty excited about. Um, so anyway, we're going to have a ribbon toss and an open house, and that is scheduled for July ninth. Now, because we've got three businesses involved in this, we're pretty sure we've got a lot of people, at least there're gonna be a lot invited, and, and we anticipate that there will be a big crowd. So, um, we have talked to the post office about it, and, you know, obviously they've wondered the other side, and, um, we've kind of found out the schedule for their trucks, and it sounds like the trucks are heavyest in the morning, so we tried to schedule this for late afternoon, and it sounds like we may have maybe one truck to worry about, but they're gonna warn that driver or, and other drivers that could come in during that time so that they can keep an eye out and keep people safe. So, um, we originally, I think, Bill talked, Bill King talked to Sherry, and so the request on the agenda is to close the alley in between these two buildings, uh, between next building and our building, and the reason for that is we just wanna be able to spread people out, we're not really sure, you know, because it's an old building and it sits right kind of on the street, we wanna make sure that, again, we're doing everything to keep people safe. Uh, but there's another part that, um, we are also, we were hoping there's one parking space in front of that building, so our goal is to be able to, uh, block that space off and be able to spread people out a little bit, and as I talked to Beth, we either about Canal Days, because we knew that, you're gonna wanna make sure that you close one lane of forty during that period to keep people safe, which should make perfect sense. So I talked to Sherry, um, well, Bill talked to Sherry first, and Sherry obviously told us what we pretty much figured, that, you know, you have to, uh, get permission from the state to do that, so I talked to Nathan by email this morning, and he connected me with the person that could give us a permit to do that, but I bring it up now because that kind of extends our request for you, and I just wanna make sure that if we come back to you, and the state says you have to sign up on it, that you're not caught off guard, if you are aware.
Okay. Um, Richard, comments?
I, I just, we have, we're met every year for Canal Days.
Okay.
The chamber hasn't been the one doing it, I've done it for the last seventeen years or so.
Okay.
Can I ask you, Richard, so if there's something I need to know?
Uh, Richard's just stating that, uh, he has done the Canal Days permit, and it's, uh, that's a standard form that anyone would have to do, so.
Yeah, there's, you have to have signage, and there's a lot of stuff involved with it, um, I sent you guys a.
Yes.
I don't know if everybody got it or not, but, um, there's a little more involved than just closing a lane.
Referring to signage and, uh, material that would have to be put up, but, um, yes, you're correct, that's something that we cannot approve, but, um, I don't think that we would, there's any reason that we would, uh, block it, pardon the language.
I don't do it on.
But, um, I think that if we first of all, vote on, uh, the alley, and at least give you that, uh, tonight, then you can move forward working with NDOT. Counsel would.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we block the alley, July ninth, between the Lofts building and McFowler's building.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, I would, I would have no problem with that, that motion, um, as far as the, obviously, NDOT's gonna control the other part of that, um, and I'd just like to know a little more information as to who's gonna, because that sounds like a lot of work for the police department, it sounds like.
Well, generally, for Canal Days, the milestone comes in and sets all the barrels and the signage up and does all that, so it's not something that the chamber does or the town does, um, they voluntarily do that, I believe, but, uh, so they, they know how to do the rerouting things, you know, they know how to set it all up, so it's, so it is proper, but.
Who's, yeah, who would do that, man?
Brenda, who would be doing, uh, the legwork when it comes to setting the signs up or blocking the street? Who would take care of that?
I, I don't know what, honestly, I don't know what all is involved yet, so, um, I, I would assume it would be handled similarly to Canal Days.
Well, that's a volunteer by milestone.
Yeah, no, what we'll do is, uh, I will volunteer to put up any barricades or any signs that we need right there by the sidewalk, but to close off the alley, I can work with the town to get the material out of the garage, is that, is that what you mean?
No, I think they're talking, uh, uh, forty.
Yeah, that was not wrong.
The, yeah, the alley's not an issue at all, it's, uh, um, for example, when Canal Days happens, Milestone comes in and volunteers and takes care of, uh, the roadblocks. Who would be taking care of that stuff for this project?
Yeah, I.
I mean, obviously, we'll have to find the materials, but we'll take care of it if we need to, I guess I'm, I'm picking the town just one to support that.
Well, I think, Brenda, we'll not talk, so, so let's take, maybe we should, maybe we should just take the motion on the alley, and we'll be done with that, but I think what we're talking about is, Milestone comes in every year, according to Richard, and they, they designate the rerouting and everything like that, so it's not, I don't think that's something that, that, that even Main Street or whoever, whoever's involved in this is capable of doing.
That anyway.
Or the chamber, I think that has to be.
Yeah, the, the chamber contacts Milestone, and then they have them come in.
So Milestone might do it for you, but we just wanna know our plan.
Hopefully, they, they never, they never do anything with that, so I guess it's.
That's not true, she, she doesn't do anything with it, I do.
Everybody pretty much does.
You wanna tell her that?
Um, there, there is permits, there are permits that have to be applied for before Canal Days.
Yeah, there are permits that have to be applied for before Canal Days, and there are rules and regulations set forth by NDOT on how, um, distance and what type of cones and barriers have to be put in place. Uh, it's, it's not just, uh, putting a cup, cones, um, there are handbooks on this.
Okay, well, I guess my question for you would be, is there a chance the town will help with consulting on this so we can get it set up right? If, if we don't, if, if Richard knows what those regulations are, I mean, we could, I, my guess is we could probably get somebody from Milestone who would be willing to help us.
I don't know what the regulations are.
Pay, is there somebody that's been consulted on that, and to be sure that we're doing, we're complying?
Richard's saying that he does not know that, what the regulations are?
I, I just simply apply for the road closure permits.
I can tell you this, though, that, um, there is a manual, and it, it is online. I have, uh, I've looked at it.
Now, Brenda, that's something Nathan may be able to help you.
Yeah, actually.
I don't wanna put words in Nathan's mouth and say, he'd help you, but he would be the one to talk to, obviously, I think.
I think this all has to be done electronically now, also, back years ago, we did, we actually did handwritten permits, but now they're all electronic.
Hey, before we go any further, then, can we, all of us, uh, talk to Nathan on this portion of it? I think he by far is the expert on this.
I, I, I'm not sure if you're talking to me, and if you're talking to me, I, I mean, we, we are consulting, I mean, we will involve him, no question.
Okay.
You'll make a motion on this.
Danny made a motion.
Okay, well, then, we have a motion and a second on approving, uh, using the alley on July ninth.
Okay, Ms. McGeeley?
Yes.
Mr. Merle?
Yes.
Mr. Mars?
Yes.
That's only to block the alley.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a timeframe on this?
Um.
Is there a timeframe? Brenda?
Two thirty is set.
Two thirty to six.
Two thirty is set.
Okay. Okay. That motion has been approved.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Could you, uh, keep us informed on anything, how it's going with NDOT, and if there's anything we can do to help? Let us know.
Okay, well, good, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Next issue, uh, edit funds.
Yes. We, Bob, can I explain this?
Yeah, every four years, you have a contract with the commissioners that, at least they asked you to, to split your edit funds so that you keep half and half goes to the EDC, county-wise, with the thought that they will also do projects that would hopefully benefit the town of Cambridge City. And some communities in Wayne County do this every four years, others do not, Cambridge has, the last one in Cambridge was done in two thousand sixteen to cover the years seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. And in that agreement, it says if you're not planning on renewing it, they would like to know on or before June thirtieth for budgetary purposes for EDC, and so that's why they're asking you what your thoughts were. Now, at first glance, I thought this was not, that it would be, if you don't do something, it's gonna be automatically renewed, but a later paragraph in there said, no, this will not impose an automatic renewal, but I think what they're basically saying is, really do your best and let us know and vote on it before June thirtieth, so everybody knows going forward whether you're gonna split funds, and you need to do it for your budgetary purposes, too, whether you're gonna have the full amount of your county edit funds or whether you're gonna split them with EDC.
Sherry, can I ask what the full amount would be?
I sent that in my email, it's like, and I didn't write that down, eighty thousand.
You have thirty-four as a half.
That's what we get, yeah.
Yeah, it's a forty-something, so. So half of it would be forty-four thousand.
Roughly.
Okay, and, um.
No, that's our half, yeah, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Right, that's our half, yeah. I'm still thinking.
We'll go with the half.
Thank you, Sherry.
I really was a scholar and man.
You know, um, I will say this, that the industrial park, we, um, we've been very limited, uh, definitely wastewater is, uh, holding the EDC back, we, uh, we're moving forward with wastewater, we're also, uh, looking at additional water capacity, we're not in as dire straits there, but someday we will run out of capacity there, but we, we have the PER going with Commonwealth right now. So I think we're doing everything that we would need to, to open the doors up for the industrial park. I think it's a good thing, uh, that we give fifty percent and that we challenge the EDC then to in turn do their best to market our industrial park within, using this money. So I, personally, I'm in support of it. Comments, starting with Bob?
I don't have a vote on it, but if you want my opinion, I do think, I mean, being on the ground floor of when EDC was created, it was the idea that everybody was in this all together, and let's split the funds, keep half, do what your own community does, and then everybody pool their other sources. If everybody decided not to pool, then EDC's not gonna have any money to be doing anything. So, yes, I do think it's a good idea, but I would never presume to talk for you guys on that.
No, thank you. I appreciate your opinion. Sherry, others?
No, it's, ever since I've been in office, we've split it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counsel?
No, I.
I'd say we just continue the path, I think, um, it's like, like, I'll just kind of restate, EDC, I'm assuming will continue to help us, and, and so.
Well, we're opening the doors for them to do their job now, so now's the time, by all means, to, uh, support them. So, could I get a motion then to continue?
Do we need a motion now, Bob, since it's?
I think to, to show your indication, you're not, they don't have, there's not a contract in front of you, but just to express to them your intent to go ahead and renew for four more years.
Okay.
Motion for intent?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion for intent to continue to split the money.
Say.
Okay, Ms. McGeeley? Mr. Merle?
Yes.
Mr. Mars?
Yes.
Great.
Jim?
Yes?
I do apologize, uh, did you catch all of that?
Um, I caught some of it, what I could hear.
Um, well, it is our intent to, um, keep funding the edit money at fifty percent.
Well, I, I think for the purposes of the EDC meetings, uh, or at least the EDC, uh, and their intent to help fund certain things, at least funding it at some percent is very important, I don't know whether fifty percent, or I don't know how that will be received, that's something I can check on.
That's what they're asking for.
They're asking for fifty percent.
And that's what we can have.
And we're offering fifty percent.
Oh, then, okay, you're good to go.
All right, uh, next issue, um, overgrown lawns through the town need mowing.
Yeah, we've been getting lists together, um, this was, um, part of the prior job because we've been sending out weed letters, registered weed letters, and I have hired one time to mow two lawns. So, um, when Dan and I was talking about it, I didn't know if you guys wanted to continue those lawns to be mowed, or if you wanted the town to mow the lawns. We don't have a push mower, so if they put their mower, the big town mower in, you know, they don't know what's in that grass, it could tear up their mowers. Um, I mean, it gets expensive hiring somebody to cut them, but yet they, they cut them down, and then we have the option to do a weed lean, but most of these people have already left the homes and we're never going to recoup the money.
How much did you pay to have the others mow?
Um, for two lawns, I paid three hundred dollars.
You know that those weed leans do get added to their taxes.
Right, and, and most of these, they've abandoned the home and then...
So they'll go to tax sale.
They're going to soon to become leans eventually, but even that, just tell them what they get.
Will we get it at tax sale? If it brings it to tax sale?
Yeah, right, so, and this, and a lot of these lean, or these mows that we do every year, it's every year, sometimes two, three times mowing, so, and there's not been a weed lean put on, even back to Michael, there was not any put on, you just do it because it costs to put a lean on, and then it costs to take a lean off, and then, you know, it's just...
Was it cost, I mean, there's a filing fee or something?
Filing fee, yeah.
How much is the filing fee?
Uh, twenty-five.
I do it for your chance, at least.
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen leans like that before, basically, that's small to smaller leans, I mean, because if you don't, then you sort of, you kind of open up the door and say, hey, I ain't going to drop it.
Well, the homes that are, you know, um, one home was in foreclosure, but you have to go by what the Beacon GIs says, who owns that property. So then when you contact them and say, why aren't you mowing your yard, you know, then, well, I turned that back over to the bank six years ago, but we have to send it to that address so the letter comes back and then it's, they're never going to pay that.
Well, I disagree with that just a little bit, only because being a part owner of title company, so many times, those weed leans survive a foreclosure, and ultimately, when that house gets sold, you will get paid that weed lean out there if they want clean titles, so it might be three or four years down the loan, road, but, um, absent it being just a terrible property that the county has to take back because nobody bought it at a tax sale, if it's a bank foreclosure sale, you'll ultimately get it paid, so I would not just dismiss it and say, don't even file it.
Okay.
And that's in position, I'm assuming, Bob, by the positioning of, and then down, so if there are his funds left, we would probably would still get paid.
Yeah, and actually, you become super priority even ahead of the mortgage.
Oh, really?
Really?
Just like, just like real estate taxes.
If we mow it twice, then I would put on two weed leans.
Sure, each time is another fee.
Okay.
I think there ought to be fees on there, not only the mowing itself, but enough fees each time to cover every bit of...
What we're paying out?
Well, no, what we're paying out, but your time and efforts.
I'll have to look and see if you can charge an administrative fee with that.
Okay. All right, well, um...
So do I just keep hiring it up then? I mean, we've been, previously, Daniel, who works part-time for the town, he has his own mowing business, so in the evenings, then he does with his own mowers and does the mowing for the town, I mean, for the, yeah, yeah, for the town.
For the town, mowing the, uh...
These, these lawns.
Abandoned law, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And I believe that would be a conflict.
No, he's part-time.
Because he's not doing it, yeah, and he's not doing it on town time. Okay. Yeah, are you guys okay with that still, doing it that way? I mean, it's the way it's been done for...
Yeah, I don't see what choice we have, really.
No, it's not, not awful.
Bad practice getting into the, Bob, doing the same field and then doing it as your job too.
He's not as his job.
Well, he's doing mowing, weeding as his job, but then he's doing city work on the side, which, because the two are related in a manner, I, I'm not, I've seen stuff like that kind of, it's kind of, it can be a conflict and it's, I, am I wrong?
You can, you just have to be really careful about having documents there.
Yeah, what you don't want him pay, you don't want to be paying him personal money for work he's doing on city town.
And if that were clear in our, uh, contract with him, then there should be no problem.
And not using town equipment?
Not, not, yeah. I'm more concerned with, uh, just what it's going to cost if we can collect all of the leans, the time work, or the time it takes to prepare the documentation. I mean, if we do this four times in a year, it's going to add up. Bob, can you get back with us for the next meeting? Should we go ahead and, I'm sure these properties are starting to...
Oh, there's, there's, this tall, some of them are.
Okay.
It's awful.
I would suggest that we go ahead and mow them one time.
Okay. And so, Bob?
Now, and you know, there, there is a method, you have to send them a letter, you get a notice first before you can go on the property and mow yourself.
Right, we waited, um, we, it has to get so high, we knew that, and then, um, we waited the amount of days that we had to wait, and then some, and then mowed it.
Okay.
Well, thanks for doing all that, Sherri.
You're welcome.
I know that's not your job.
I'm not making a motion, we go ahead and mow, reuse one more time until we find out more.
Okay. A second?
Second, okay. And Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Worrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martis?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, last review business.
Dan?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, may I, may I one, say one thing on that last topic, which might be helpful?
Sure, please.
Um, the Main Street organization, as well as the Chamber, I believe, has indicated a desire to support the town in, uh, creating a program or programs that could help, uh, offset from a manpower standpoint as well as a cost standpoint, to help you guys, or help the town in general, uh, manage some of these properties, whether it be cleanup or, or even maybe even taking some type of ownership or doing paperwork or whatever, so if that's something that the town council would be interested in, Main Street organization or potentially even the Chamber, um, getting involved with you and helping, uh, that is a, it is an appropriate mission of a Main Street organization to help encourage property owners, whether debunked or not, to, uh, really create a better look for the town because we, we, we have a significant issue and it's a growing issue, I think, with maybe any of the other plumbing issues that make it worse, that maybe we could help with, so just if you want us to get involved, we'd be glad to.
Um, Jim, I'd love to talk more about that, and then, uh, you and I, and then possibly have you, have someone present that at the next council meeting?
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, um, moving on, we have interest in the old fire rescue bed outside, that's sitting outside the Miller Building that we're not using.
Correct.
I believe that there's no foreseeable use of this bed.
It's up here, old rescue.
Okay, um, do you have an estimate of what a new bed like that would cost?
No, I have to, just check and find out. I'm, I'm not sure what we paid for that one, but I'll go back and look and, uh, I'll check and see what we paid for that one.
But Bob, we wouldn't be able to just sell it, we'd have to have like a closed bid or something, right?
Just like you do on a cruiser that you got, uh, demon, that it's no longer, it's not usable, is ready to be disbanded.
Good, I was thinking that.
It is a, it's a good bed. Okay, as we talked, could we then, could we get an idea of what a replacement cost would be, and then set a reserve at the, at a low percentage of that?
Yep.
Um, and then go out and post it for bid? Closed bids?
So have, you'll have your information by the next, by July meeting?
Yeah, I'll book and book, see if I can buy a board, Bob.
You want to do that?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Counsel, does that sound fair?
Okay. So then you would not be taking the bids until the August meeting, so you, so you're not ready to be taking them in July, or?
I, I'm okay with that, uh, it's, it's semi-in the way, but it's not like it's blocking a, uh, part of the building off. Wouldn't be good to get rid of it, but I, August is fine.
Great.
Okay, so we will, uh, hear from Jeff, and then we'll prepare to run the ad after the, uh, July meeting. Great. All right, reports from committees, boards, and commissioners. Um, anyone? Debbie?
No, nothing.
Jeff?
No.
All right, um, Wastewater District, um, we are moving again positive, we've had some setbacks on this issue, uh, we will be having a meeting Monday night where, uh, our first meeting in three months, and, uh, giving all, some updates on financials again, but, uh, should be a very important meeting, if somebody's interested in watching.
Did you see how the rooms that I've been going over?
Yeah, will, should be. Um, I will take the, uh, fees, waiving the fees to the board meeting in hopes that we approve, do the same as the city, or town, excuse me. So, uh, moving on then, Richard?
I have a couple of things, um, as you all know, we were doing a process to try to hire another officer, and we've concluded that, and I'd like to get permission to hire Corey Webb as a full-time police officer.
Where's he from?
Uh, he's originally from Centerville, he doesn't buy land now. He's a Marine Corps veteran, uh, lives in land, he's got five kids, I think, so, yeah.
Is he going to stay in land, or is he thinking?
Um, no, I think his plan is to move down here, um, or at least closer, so. Um, just, he went through, he went through the whole process, uh, no, he's not academy certified now. Uh, we only had app, one applicant that was, um, we only had one applicant that it was.
And if, if it does not work with Corey, would we have a backup from your review process?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we let Richard hire Corey, Corey, what was his last?
Webb.
Webb.
Second.
Captain, Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Worrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martis?
Yes. All right.
I also would like to get permission to hire Chase Wisner as a reserve officer, he went through our process as well, um, and he's agreed to be a reserve police officer with us too, so, uh, he's a local guy.
What's his last name?
Wisner.
Yes.
W, W-I-S-N-E-R. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that exactly right, but...
Okay, I make a motion that we let Richard hire Chase Wisner for a reserve.
Second.
Okay, Worrell called up, Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Worrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martis?
Yes.
Perfect.
We're going to try to work on our reserve program a little bit now that we're going to get back to full staff, Chase will make our second reserve officer, we, in the past, have normally carried five, um, they've moved on, went on to get other jobs or whatever, some of, uh, the most recent ones, one got hired at the Rush County Sheriff's Department as a full-time officer down there, so, which is, which is good for us too, because, you know, they gained the experience here and then moved on to do what they want to do, so, uh, so we're going to try to build our reserve program back up a little bit, but the only other thing I have was to see, make sure, ask counsel that if we're going to continue with our K-9 program, um, as you know, we've went through all this with the K-9 program and, uh, we did get our check finally, um, I just want to see what the interest is, if we're going to continue on with it, I, I personally think we should, um, but I'm not going to move forward to start looking if council doesn't want to deal with it, so.
Well, I think it's beneficial, right? I mean...
Absolutely. We found another avenue to, uh, pursue, uh, purchasing a dog in the future, um, which is considerably cheaper than where we went before, uh, so we're going to explore those options also, but, um, we save some money, for one thing, but, uh, the, the training time, the downtime, the officer's gone for training for this last two, um, it's still the same amount of training, but to be gone for six weeks is, that's not, it's, this new place is not like that, so, um, it, I think it'd be better for us, but...
I do believe that Crime Watch still wants to be a part of that, so...
Sure, yeah, I, I, you know, everything that's happened with all this, they've been, you know, I've been in contact with them, so they're up to date, up to date with everything, so, and they, they should, still, still support it, so.
My person would still be in support of it, I don't know.
By all means, I'm definitely in support of it, and it's just the financing that I'm concerned, but, but if we, if you have support, other support?
I think we'll, the financing part of it, we're in pretty good shape at the moment, um, this is not going to happen, you know, next week, it's going to be sometime, maybe this fall, we'll start advancing on it, um, just because we're manpower issues and all that, but, um, this new place, it also takes a little time for them to go out and find a dog that will fit our department, um, and it's more of a one-on-one training with the, with the K-9 itself, which is, which is good too, or it seems to be, um, so...
Is it a dual purpose?
It will be a dual, dual purpose, yes.
Uh, Jim, you're listening to all this, right? Jim?
Is he still there?
Jim, are you still there?
Have you missed him or not?
I'm going to call from Main Street's head up on that one. He's got over there.
That's all I had.
Okay.
Like, we should close Parkway Drive on July 5th from a property line to, uh, or North Green Street for a car show.
I make a motion, we let Jeff close, uh, Parkway Drive for the car show.
What's the hours?
Uh, we'll close at seven thirty, open up probably four.
Uh, second, sorry.
Okay, and both, Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Worrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martis?
Yes.
I was waiting on that.
I'm doing a lot of work tonight, so...
I know.
Um, Bob?
Nothing further than what we've talked about.
Okay, um, I have been talking to the guys, uh, and with everything going on this year, uh, all communities are seeing their civil side funding, uh, is dropping. How much, I don't know, and if there will be, uh, financial assistance later on, I don't know, but, um, I ask that, uh, basically, uh, free spending, equipment spending, uh, only to emergencies, and if it can be fixed, by all means, fix it, um, but, Bob, I don't know if you've heard elsewhere, but...
No, I mean, I've gotten, asked, asked Sherri some flyers on budget, be careful when we put our budgets together this year because the state funding from different, the motor vehicle, because of how much less use has been, that motor vehicle tax is going to be a lot less, and, um, lottery monies are not going to be the same, and so just be prepared, but that, they haven't given us any specifics.
I know, uh, places that are cutting budgets by ten percent and expecting the same and freezing on budgets next year as well, so, um, I did speak to the guys about that, uh, and spending, and, uh, Richard? So I did speak to the guys about that spending and Richard, just keep that in mind. Right now, Sherry, until you have, do you have any idea on when we're receiving the check?
No, we're supposed to get it by June 30th, but we may not this year. From emails that I'm seeing is that, you know, it could be late with property tax being pushed out later, we could...
Yeah, the real estate taxes are still due, May 10th, but if people looked in under the covers, they realized no penalties were going to be assessed until June or July the 11th. So consequently, a lot of people are holding off on their taxes, and so I'm sure we'll have a delayed payment if nothing else from the real estate taxes first installed.
All right, well, as I said, I spoke to the guys about that, but Sherry, anything else?
No, I'm covered.
Okay, then I would request a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All righty.
All right. Thank you, everyone.